Members Craig and Paley, who are joining us today, appreciate their attendance as we receive a presentation from the Charter Review Commission. I'd like to take a moment to recognize the members of the Charter Review Commission and those present today to brief us on their efforts over the past weeks and months. Our co-chairs, State Representative Michael F. Curtin and Marshell Moore, Vice President of Legal and Government Affairs and General Counsel for the Central Ohio Transit Authority, as well as other members, Jeff Cabot, Executive Director of Kids Voting Central Ohio, and Don Tyler Lee. He Doran, who has done a couple of tours of duty on Charter Review Commissions throughout the year. Thank you, Mr. Doran, for your service. Representative Curtin and Ms. Moore agreed to serve as co-chairs of the commission, and I'd like to extend my personal thanks to both of them for their commitment to this process and for their leadership in guiding this commission through a comprehensive review of the Columbus Charter. Commission member Dawn Tyler Lee couldn't be here today, but I do want to thank her and the entire commission for their tireless efforts. On April 2 of this year, Columbus Mayor Michael B. Coleman and I announced the creation of the Charter Review Commission. This panel of highly regarded civic leaders, who I just introduced, were charged with conducting a top-to-bottom review of the Columbus City Charter and making recommendations for potential revisions. The commission's review was comprehensive, to say the least, and great efforts were made to ensure the process was open to the public and as transparent as possible. The commission held seven working meetings and two public hearings, during which they received direct input from the community and heard many hours of detailed presentations from city staff. The commission also made great use of technology and social media. All commission meetings were broadcast and rebroadcasted on CTV Channel 3 and are available for viewing on the webpage specifically dedicated to the work of the commission. An online forum was developed to receive written comments, and meetings were widely publicized via numerous press advisories, the City Bulletin, Facebook, and Twitter. The commission's work culminated in recommendations submitted to the mayor and council and posted online, which includes specific amendment language, suggestions to improve, clarify, or modernize the charter, and a few recommendations to further research sections that require additional consideration and deliberation. The Columbus City Charter was originally adopted by Columbus voters in 1914, and it outlines the fundamental rights, powers, and responsibilities of the citizens and their elected municipal officials. It was last amended in 2010, and in 1999 and 1998 before that. In each of these instances, revisions to the charter were limited to specific sections. It has been well over a decade since the charter received a thorough review, and it's only fitting that on the 100th anniversary of the charter, we use this moment and time to make certain this document reflects the values that define us as a city. To quote co-chair Moore, "Our charter should be a living document, evolving with the needs and expectations of the citizenry it serves." I couldn't agree more, and in just a moment, we will hear from Ms. Moore and Representative Curtin, who, with the support of their fellow commissioners, the city attorney and city staff, will present their recommendations to council and the mayor. Before I turn the meeting over to the commission co-chairs, I do want to point out that today's meeting is being broadcast live on CTV and will be rebroadcasted both on CTV and the web. We will be accepting public testimony today, and those wishing to speak may fill out a speaker slip and submit it to the chair. We will accept speaker slips until 2:30. All rules pertaining to speaking before council will apply, and speakers will have three minutes to speak. Speakers are also encouraged to submit written testimony to council, and it will be shared with all council members following today's hearing. With that, I will yield the floor to commission co-chairs, Representative Mike Curtin and Ms. Marshell Moore.
Thank you, Council President Ginther, members Craig and Paley. It's been an honor and a privilege for me to serve as a co-chair of this commission, along with co-chair Moore and the other three distinguished members of the commission. We took our charge very seriously and devoted over three months of work to bring you this report today, and we were tremendously aided by the expert staff of the mayor's office, council office, city attorney's office, and Auditor Doran and his office. So it was a pleasure, a great educational opportunity for all of us, and we look forward to seeing what council does with these recommendations. I think, Council President, you summarized well the outreach efforts and the process. So what I'd like to do is get right into the meat of the recommendations, starting with Section 231, the annual reports. It was the commission's view that the framers of the charter back in 1914 took pains to ensure that the essential documents of the city would be public, and we felt that our charge was to honor that spirit and bring it into the 21st century. And so with that thinking, our recommendation is that the charter, Section 231, specify that annual reports of the city are public records, and they must be retained permanently and electronically. It was my feeling as co-chair, and I think shared by other commissioners, that for many in our public, perhaps most in our public, electronic records are not presumed to be permanent. So we felt that the language of permanent, permanently and electronically, would safeguard that 100-year-old stipulation that these records be permanent and be always accessible. With that, I think we can go to the next slide, and I would invite any of my fellow commissioners to give me the high sign or butt in or tell me I'm off-base if it's some necessary contexts to be added. There will be some sections, President Ginther, where I will specifically turn to a fellow member or staff for additional context. The recommendation that there be a formal mechanism for Charter Review Commissions follows in the spirit of provisions that are contained in many state constitutions in the United States and many city charters in this state and other states. While city council and the mayor's office have done a good job over the decades in calling for periodic Charter Review Commissions, there's been nothing that requires that, and it was the commission's feeling that having a decennial requirement in the charter would be a valuable addition, so that there would be a formal mechanism to make sure that this fundamental document is given a thorough review on at least an every 10-year basis, and nothing in this recommendation or nothing in this language should it be approved by. The voters would prohibit the mayor and the council from calling for a Charter Review Commission more frequently than once every 10 years, should those offices feel it's necessary. But this would at least ensure the citizens that that document would get a thorough review at least once every 10 years. Next recommendation has to do with technical changes. It's been long-recognized, I think, by staff here of all offices, that sometimes the evolution of our language and the evolution of our culture outruns how we describe things in our formal documents, and sometimes we notice errors, omissions, contextual problems. And for those sorts of things, we shouldn't have to go to the electorate for a technical change, a comma here, a semicolon there, or getting rid of sexist language or otherwise offensive languages society deems as necessary. So this proposed change would simply allow city officials, city council, through the 30-day ordinance mechanism, to authorize technical changes in the charter, and we think the need for that is rather self-evident. The next recommendation has to do with the duties of the city clerk, and those duties over the last 100 years have been scattered here and there in various sections of the charter. Our intent with this recommendation is to bring these loose parts together into one body and to make it clear that the duties and obligations of the clerk are all in one place in the charter and much more clear than they are today. There are also some antiquated provisions dealing with the clerk's responsibilities, having to do with a bureau that doesn't exist and hasn't existed for quite some time, the Bureau of Information and Publicity, for example, and so this is largely a recommendation for cleanup. The next recommendation has to do with the Civil Service Commission and recommending that we move from a one-year to three-years in the timeframe that current and former city employees can be reinstated to the eligibility list for classification without the need for redundant testing. Quite frankly, that's the practice now. The commission, for some time, has been allowing a three-year window so that they can cut down on the amount of redundant testing required. So this would be, quite frankly, bringing, recognizing in the charter, we're bringing up to speed what's been going on for a long time, anyway. The next recommendation has to do with several sections regarding the council. We believe that this recommendation would recognize the modern organization and duties of the council, the council president, the council pro temp, and council committees, bring clarity to the succession of office of the council president, and deal with several provisions having to do with qualifications, inability, and salary, which we will address Of all of the comments that the commission received from members of the public, by far the lion's share of those comments, even though they didn't come from a wide grouping of people, they came from a rather narrow grouping of people in the community, but nevertheless, the most vocal, if you will, redundant recommendation we heard had to do with going to a ward system or a mixed ward and at-large system for council. So the commission felt that we needed to address that head-on, and it was a unanimous sense of the five commissioners that the seven-member-at-large council has served the city very well, especially relative to our peer cities in Ohio and in other states. And so there's a strong feeling among the commission members that if it's not broken, we shouldn't be trying to fix it, and I would ask my colleague Auditor Doran if he would like to make some comments. I think his perspective, his tenure here, which chumps all of ours by a lot, was very well-received by the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Curtin. Excuse me, Mr. Ginther and council members. I had the privilege of serving on the Charter Review Commission in 1998, where, again, I believe, I believe at that time, it was one single voice raised this particular issue of creating wards among city council members. I believe, from my experience, that the current structure of the council, meaning an at-large council, subject to being elected by every voter in the city of Columbus, has proven to work pretty well since its establishment in 1914. I believe that, and it's been echoed many, many times, that every elected official, whether they be a council member, a mayor, a city auditor, or a city attorney, should be held responsible to every voting citizen, every citizen in the city, not dividing them up into being responsible to a certain neighborhood or a certain sector or ward. I believe that dividing up into wards would, in fact, bring divisiveness to the city, and that's an environment we do not want to see. At the same time, we believe very strongly that every voting citizen in Columbus should have the opportunity to vote on every one of its officials, meaning every city council member, the mayor, the auditor, and the city attorney. So once again, through a charter revision group or suggested revisions, we again chose to follow the pattern that was expressed in 1998 and reject the notion of dividing the city into wards for purposes of council representation and strongly support the continuation of the structure as we know it today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. The next sections deal with elected official compensation. As you know, it's, since the adoption of the charter, it's been the province of the city council to set the salaries of all the elected officials in City Hall, and the commission feels that the buck should continue to stop with city council, that council should continue to have the obligation and the responsibility to set those salaries. However, that there ought to be a step before that step, and that is a professional thorough review of elected official compensation, the marketplace, if you will, for public service, so that it's very clear to the public that there is a professional, human resources-oriented approach, if you will, to the environment that our public officials are serving in, and that therefore, this commission recommends a section of the charter be added to create a Citizens' Commission on Elected Official Compensation, to do that thorough review, to assess the marketplace for public service, the responsibilities, the hours, and so forth of our city officials, and then to come to the council with recommendations for, say, no salaries. The recommendation of the commission would be that we retain the longstanding provision, that there could not be any interim raises, that salaries would be set before a term would begin, with the caveat that this commission would have the authority of recommending to council a cost-of-living adjustment within the term, the four-year terms of our elected city officials, and that no increases could exceed that cost-of-living level within a term, should council agree with that recommendation of the commission, should it be made. I would ask, because this is a matter of sensitivity, of course, when elected officials have to vote on their own salaries to ask staff if I left out any material concerns that went into this evaluation. Brian or Sharon?
Thank you, Council President Ginther and Co-Chair Curtin. I believe that you've adequately summarized the items here. I would just reiterate that council would not be able to exceed the recommendations of the Citizens' Commission. Council could accept the recommendations in whole, accept any portion of the recommendations, or reject them. If council chose to reject the recommendations, the salary then enforced would continue for another four years. Thank you.
The next section of recommendations has to do with elections. The Charter Review Commission recommends the modernization of the charter's elections provisions, including nominations, initiative, referendum, the recall, ballots, petitions, and charter amendments. There are many antiquated provisions in our charter with regard to elections. Some are in conflict with state law, and some are simply referred to antiquated language that hasn't been followed for a very long time. So these recommendations would attempt to bring city elections, as much as possible, into conformance with state statute on how elections are actually conducted. And I'm looking, Brian, to see if I have, and I think I do, an appendix here to allow me to stipulate a few of the more substantive provisions in our recommendations. We would recommend that we maintain nonpartisan elections. As Mr. Doran said, that we maintain every citizen's right to vote for every elected official in their city government. That council have clear authority to enact ordinances on disclosure, campaign finance disclosure, on candidate and issue elections. Eliminate the references to different ballot forms, which are in conflict with state statute. Retain our ability to make modifications to ballots by charter or ordinance of council. Under nominations, use state petition forms, except where provided by charter or ordinance. To maintain the requirement that a candidate submit 1,000 valid signatures for running for city office, and that was a measure that got quite a bit of discussion by the commission. We recognized in the end, however, that that threshold has been lowered in recent years. It used to be much higher, and so for the current timeframe that we're in, we came to a conclusion, a consensus, if you will, that 1,000 valid signature requirements should be retained. One of the public comments we had from one of the early folks who showed up to testify pointed out that we have some antiquated provisions in our nomination forms requiring signers of petitions to pledge their support to a candidate. We're recommending that be struck. It's clearly an anachronism, and to remove the archaic requirement about candidates Bear with me for one minute. One of the more substantive recommendations in this category is to establish a one-year period for a citizens' group to gather signatures on petitions for a charter amendment, and that's also for referendums. Is that correct, Brian?
That would also be for initiated ordinance.
For initiated ordinance. Our feeling was there's no ceiling now on the length of time a petition can be out there circulating, and that struck us as contrary to common sense, that there ought to be a time period, and the commission felt that one year would be sufficient and would meet the test of common sense. On the initiative and referendum, we do not change the requirement, the 5% of votes cast in the last regular municipal election for mayor, with a 10% of votes cast for governor. We do recommend that we bring uniformity to that provision, though, so that there not be discrepancy between one group's petition and another's, and so we are recommending that the reference point be the last mayoral election, as opposed to the last municipal I would ask you at this time, Brian, to help me summarize other significant items in this category.
Thank you, Council President Ginther and Co-Chair Curtin. I think you'll see here an attempt to bring some uniformity, consistency, and predictability to the petitioning process. Probably one of the most substantive changes is that any citizen could request from the city clerk a template for any type of petition. That template would be sufficient as to form, so that person would not have to look at our charter, at city code, at state law, and discern what applies and does not apply to any given petition form. We also look at harmonizing several state law provisions that have been updated for state issues, but unfortunately for municipal issues, have not been updated since the 1950s or 1970s. So, for example, a requirement that all petitions be filed with the city clerk, so that there's not discrepancy depending on the type of petition a person is filing, using new state law standards to control the circulation and validation of the petition signatures, providing for a certified copy that would be reviewed by both the city clerk and by the city attorney, who would provide some feedback on some of the provisions, especially with regard to an initiated ordinance, where a citizens' initiated ordinance has to follow the same requirements as a council ordinance. We would maintain the 30-day window to file a referendum or a recall after filing the certified copy. That's also best practice in state law. One thing that we are recommending is that we follow the state law recommendation for statutory cities and the charters of all of our sister cities in Ohio, and place ultimate responsibility with the city council in determining the legal sufficiency as to form and the validity of signatures for the initiative, the referendum, and charter amendments. The city clerk would retain that requirement for the recall. Those are provisions that are consistent across Ohio and other cities and in state law. With regard to council action on initiatives and referendums, currently, council has insufficient time to make an informed judgment about an initiated ordinance or a referendum, so we're recommending a more timely timeline, so that the board has sufficient time to validate the signatures, council has sufficient time to review the petition for sufficiency, and then council would have 30 days to hold hearings and consider the citizens' recommendation, should the petition be sufficient. For charter amendments, we are limited by the Ohio Constitution with regard to the number of signatures and the deadlines, so that would remain, but we are able, for the first time, to provide quite a bit of clarity for the circulation of those petitions and the form of those petitions. The most substantive change is the removal of what is probably the most archaic section of our charter, and that is the recall provision. Currently, to recall a sitting elected official, an individual would have to file a certain number of signatures with the city clerk. That official would have five days to resign if they chose not to. The city clerk would place petitions in the fire-engine houses of the city. If anyone wanted to sign a recall petition, they would have to go to a fire station, request it from the firefighter in charge, and then return it back to that firefighter. That is not in keeping with any other city's recall provision, so we recommend adoption of state law primarily with regards to the recall, that there would be 15% of the votes cast the last election for mayor to trigger a recall, that you could not file a petition within 180 days of a person taking office or within 90 days of their election, that no more than three elected officials may be recalled at a single election. Currently, under our charter, every elected official of the city of Columbus could be recalled at the same time, leading to a crisis and continuity of government for our city. The city clerk, as he or she currently does, would determine the sufficiency of the petition. This is in keeping with state law and other city charters, and then, lastly, maintain the requirement that a vacancy after recall be filled, as otherwise provided by the charter. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Obviously, a tremendous amount of work went into these sections, and I think I can speak for the entire commission, we're of the strong belief that it would be well-served by each and every one of these changes. The next recommendation has to do with a new section of the charter on equal rights and nondiscrimination, and I think it's important enough to read it in its entirety. It is brief. Our recommendation is inclusion of the following in the charter. No officer, employee, or agent of the city shall deny equal access to city services or equal opportunity in employment and promotion, or the benefits thereof, to any person on the basis of race, sex, sexual orientation, gender, identity or expression, color, religion, ancestry, national origin, age, disability, family or military status, or any other status that is protected by federal, state, or local law or ordinance. that is protected by federal, state, or local law or ordinance. It was commission's feeling this brings us into the 21st century on equal rights and nondiscrimination reflects the spirit of this city of ours and that it rises to the level of needing to be in the charter and not just city ordinance. The next section has to do with ethics and prohibited acts for public officials. The charter and state law currently have different legal standards for the same violation, namely having unlawful interest in public contracts. State law goes beyond our charter, identifying significant violations of the public trust in ORC Section 2921. We recommend use of the state law standard to determine if a violation exists while keeping the charter's tough penalty, the loss of office or employment if a violation occurs. This is an area that got quite a bit of scrutiny and a lot of input from the city attorney's office, from Mr. Cox, and we feel we arrived at a good place on this recommendation. The next section has to do with inability of officeholders, both temporary and permanent. And I'm going to ask Brian to address this because it got very technical. The commission had lots of questions. Mr. Dorian had a lot of penetrating questions about the practical effect of how this would play out in the case that's ever needed. And with that, Brian, I'd ask you to provide the proper context.
Thank you, Council President Ginther and Co-Chair Curtin. I'd like to thank Josh Cox and Sheri Kish for working hand-in-hand with me to arrive at what we think is a very useful addition to the charter. Currently, the charter addresses the temporary or permanent inability of the mayor, but does not adequately identify what would trigger temporary or permanent inability, what the standard of review would be. It is an important issue that we feel time has come to be addressed in the charter. The recommendation is twofold. For any elected official in the city of Columbus, that individual would annually file with the city clerk a list of agents, one or more agents, who could act on their behalf should they be incapacitated. We define incapacitated as being unable to discharge the powers and duties of office. This is based on the U.S. constitutional standard for the president. If the officeholder or one of those agents files a temporary declaration of inability for the mayor, the city auditor, and the city attorney, that would allow an acting officeholder to act in their stead until one of three things happens. Either the declaration is rescinded, six months have passed, or the office is vacated. The second item is permanent inability. This is certainly a more serious item because it could lead to vacating the office. We spent quite a bit of time looking at this, and Chief Counsel Cox recommended the use of what he refers to as an extraordinary writ, the writ of quo rehento. This would essentially allow that if an individual officeholder has been unable to discharge the powers and duties of their office for 90 days, and during those 90 days they have not filed a declaration of inability, the person who should be acting in their stead, so for example, the presiding officer of council, the deputy auditor, would be required under our charter to request that the appropriate official begin in the appropriate court a writ of quo rehento. If the court finds that the person is unable to discharge powers and duties of office and that inability is of indeterminate or permanent duration, the office would be vacated and the vacancy would be filled as otherwise provided in the city charter. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. The next section has to do with the mayor's budget estimate. The key changes in our recommendation is to eliminate reference to auditors' blanks for preparing the budget, since these are obsolete, removal of reference to the sinking fund, which you'll hear about in a minute, and a shift from printing and distributing budget books. I think the stipulation in the charter is 200 budget books to libraries and newspapers and so forth, to electronic records which are easier to access. This recognizes bringing the public dissemination obligation into the 21st century and again to make sure that they're available to all in permanent form. The next section has to do with open meetings, and the Charter Review Commission is recommending inclusion in the charter, an affirmative reference to state laws governing open meetings while expanding the state law requirements to include purely advisory bodies of the city. As you know, it's never been crystal clear whether certain bodies such as area commissions are or not under the same open meetings requirements that this council is and other city bodies are. And we felt that it's important to bring as much sunshine to bear on these advisory bodies and to make sure that the open meetings requirement is as broad as we can effectively make it. The next section has to do with prohibited use of public funds. The Ohio Revised Code, Section 9.03 establishes prohibited uses of public funds but excludes charter municipalities such as Columbus. Because this is a core limit on the use of government funds, we recommend, again, an affirmative statement in the charter with the required ordinance from this council to establish those prohibited uses. The commission recommends modeling that ordinance on the general provisions of state law. And at this time, I would ask staff and any fellow commissioner if there's more they'd like to add to this section. On public records, after quite a bit of discussion in this area as well, the commission recommends an affirmative statement in the charter of the city's responsibility to provide records of the city to the public pursuant to general laws of the state. We had quite a bit of discussion about whether we should go further than what state statute requires. And in the end, we felt that if we're in conformance with state law, we would be where we need to be. The next section has to do with qualifications for city elected officials. Currently, as you know, qualifications for office do vary, some in our city charter without explicit reason. We recommend a more uniform set of qualifications with two minor deviations, maintaining the limit on public employment of the mayor and the requirement that the city attorney be an attorney-at-law. And again, I'd ask staff or any fellow commissioners if there are contextual comments to add in this regard. The next section is the Recreation and Parks Commission. This, too, had quite a bit of discussion by the commissioners, by representatives of the Recreation and Parks Commission, by staff. We came out recommending modernizing the appointment process in two regards. Eight of nine positions would be appointed by the mayor with concurrence of council, while one position would be appointed by Metro Parks with concurrence of the mayor and council. The members would be allowed to live in Columbus, Franklin County, or counties contiguous to Franklin versus the current limit to living only in Franklin County. That limit was established, we believe, when Columbus was contained wholly within Franklin County before it grew into surrounding counties. And therefore, we think this recognizes reality of where the city of Columbus is and continues to go, allows the Recreation and Parks Commission to get talent wherever it can get that talent in our metropolitan area, although the recommendation is that we maintain a requirement that a majority of members would have to live in Columbus. The next section has to do with residency of city employees, Section 158-1 of the charter. And after quite a bit of discussion and hearing from the Civil Service Commission, the Charter Review Commission decided to recommend no action at this time but to endorse a formal review that we have been told would be estimated to last 18 to 24 months of the value in this section in developing a solution to what is a moot provision of the city charter by an Ohio Supreme Court ruling. It's an area clearly that needs to be addressed. There was some sentiment on the commission that current section is a dead soldier and therefore might need to be removed from the battlefield. But removing it this time may have unintended consequences in terms of sending messages that are not intended to various constituencies about what is intended. So we recognize that we weren't going to be in business for a great deal of time longer, and this was an issue that required a lot of due diligence. And so we are not making a recommendation, but we are heartened by the fact that there will be a thorough review as to what should replace the current language in the city The next section is dealing with the sinking fund, and I would respectfully ask Auditor Dorian to address this so I don't mangle it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ginther, and council members. As you all know, I'm sure, that there are four entities within city government that respond to or answer to commissions. All the members of those commissions are all appointed by the mayor and subject to the confirmation of the Columbus City Council. Those commissions are Recreation and Parks Commission, the Civil Service Commission, our Health Commission, and the Sinking Fund. The Sinking Fund had a very, very major and vital role in city government many, many years ago. Over three decades ago now, its role has diminished considerably. So what this is, this amendment is an attempt to streamline the services of city obligations, city debts, bonds, notes, and so forth. Interestingly enough, the Sinking Fund today consists of one employee, and that employee himself has stepped forth and agreed with this amendment. There will continue to be checks and balances, all of the duties that are presently assigned to the Sinking Fund, most of which are already duplicated by your auditor, your Department of Finance and Management. And now will be taken over again by the auditor, the Department of Finance and Management, and the city treasurer, and all of those duties always subject to the final resolution of an ordinance by city council. So again, it's an attempt to streamline or add some efficiencies to this part of our local government. And quite frankly, in all the studies and all the questioning that I have gone through and that I've offered on this subject, I've not encountered any opposition to eliminating the Sinking Fund. So I recommend that and offer that to our voters.
Thank you, Mr. Dorian. And the last area in which the commission is making a recommendation, Mr. President, has to do with utilities, Sections 118 to 124 and Section 194. There clearly is a lot of antiquated language in our charter regarding utilities, and I would respectfully ask Mr. Clark to address this section.
Thank you, Council President Ginther and Co-Chair Curtin. With regard to utilities, our current charter section, speaking to utilities, only speaks to a Department of Water. It doesn't recognize the modern utilities that the city provides. So the first recommended change is to modernize that language and recognize the other utilities. The second is some archaic provisions with regard to depreciation and cash deposits for water service. There is one section that we recommend retaining with some significant amendments, and that speaks to the ability of council to establish a fund that would provide forgiveness for city utility bills for specified organizations. The commission recommended that that be retained but be expanded so that council would have the permissive authority to establish a fund that would forgive some or all of the utility bills for a nonprofit within the city of Columbus that provides services to disadvantaged persons but is not wholly funded by a government entity. In addition to this, there's a recommendation from the commission that in our franchise section of the charter, we adopt fairly standard language in other cities that would state that council would retain an affirmative interest in the rates that are set in that franchise and that those rates may not be discriminatory against any person. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Thank you, fellow commissioners. With that, Mr. President, we feel we've delivered a report that reflects an awful lot of work over three months plus, as I said, aided greatly by the expert staff of all the city offices. Commissioners feel very comfortable that we've delivered a substantial report that hopefully will serve the city well as council decides what elements to forward to the electorate. And we'd be happy to answer any questions that council members may have of us or of
Thank you, Representative Curtin. I don't know if my colleagues have any questions right off the bat or comments. Councilmember Paley?
Thank you, Council President Ginther. I just want to comment and thank you for all your hard work, all of you, the staff, Brian Clark, Sheri Kish. One of the things that I want to note for the public that if you get the report and read it, it's very easy to read, and it does explain things pretty well in a short format. So it's not going to necessarily put you to sleep. I found it very quick, to the point, and interesting, and I want to thank you for that because sometimes these reports can be hard to read. So I wanted to encourage the public that wanted to read it to do so, that it's a very easily readable report, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Councilmember Gregg?
Thank you, President Ginther. Let me also acknowledge the work of the commission, certainly the leadership of Representative Curtin, and also all of the commissioners and the co-chair, Ms. Moore, for your work, for your diligence, and your thoroughness. This certainly is extremely important document. In many ways, it is a living document. And we are encouraged that the public had the opportunity for input around these very, in some ways complicated, but extremely important issues. So we want to thank Mr. Dorian for his continued service to our city and his hard work daily to ensure that our city is operating in a way that our citizens can be extremely proud. Certainly, I want to thank our staff that have been working in their capacity on this document for this extended period of time. So I'm anxious, again, to, as we hear public comments regarding the output of this document. Again, it is important. I would agree with my colleague. The reading of the information is clear, it's concise, and we hope that it will be helpful in their discernment as we move forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Just a couple of questions. I guess I'd be interested in perspective of the commissioners. I think as I take a look at the great lengths you've gone to solicit public input during this process, based on the input I've seen, suggestions have been limited to relatively few subject areas. But the commission did respond to each of them in the report based on the feedback we got. It looks like comment fell into one of the few categories. Either they're included in your recommendations, they reflect the feedback you got, they were deemed inappropriate for inclusion in the charter, or deemed unnecessary as they were already adequately addressed in the charter and city code. Do you all feel, does that match up with your thoughts based on the public input you received during the process, that those three categories match up with your perspective
I would say yes, Mr. Ginther. The one possible exception which I cited is there was public comment by, let me say, almost singular individual who argued for the almost singular individual who argued for the council wards, which I disagreed with. But other than that, there was, I don't believe, any substantive disagreements presented.
President Ginther, I think one commenter suggested something about the Board of Zoning Appeals being an elected body as opposed to an appointed body. Again, we thought that falls in the category of not needing to be dealt with in the charter. You know, some might think that there was a paucity of public comment and concern about the charter, and I think to a large degree, that's because this charter, even though it's 100 years old, continues to serve the city well. And although we found many places suitable for updating and cleaning up, they are not, they're not burning issues to the electorate of the city. So that's probably why we only had a few commentators on a few specific issues. In general, I think the city charter was a progressive document 100 years ago and continues to be, and I think our recommended changes will bring it fully up to date.
Councilmember Paley?
I did have one person contact my office about some changes that they wanted in the charter, but when we discussed it, and he actually realized that the charter was probably not the appropriate place for it and was thrilled that city council was addressing the issue at all. So I think most of the questions that I've had, people either didn't understand the necessary need for the charter and what should be in the charter, and/or were using it as a way to voice their opinions, which is fine because we definitely hear them. And so I appreciate the fact that there were so few concerns, and the ones that I believe that were out there were addressed. So thank you.
I did want to ask one question regarding campaign finance. I know that it was discussed and considered. It's been suggested the council has granted the authority to address campaign finance reform as a result of a prior Charter Review Commission, but some have said that we failed to do that. It's wholly untrue, and previous councils have since implemented campaign finance reforms, including mandatory reporting requirements over and above that which state law requires and requiring those lobbying city officials to register with the city clerk. Could you share your thoughts on that, this topic? It's obviously an evolving issue with Citizens United and other court decisions, and I'm interested in your thoughts on proposals you've seen with regard to campaign contribution limits and public financing of campaigns, if you'd be willing to share those?
Council President Ginther, speaking for one commissioner, I've been dismayed by a series of federal court rulings in recent years appearing to open the floodgates to unreported money. There's the issue, of course, of limits, contribution limits, expenditure limits, and one can, I think, in good conscience, come out anywhere. One might want to come out in terms of whether we should have limits at all, and if so, what they should be. It's a whole nother issue to torpedo effective disclosure laws, which I think is happening under our eyes. And so, I mean, for, as one commissioner, I would hope that this council, Representative Citizens of Columbus, would do everything possible to make sure that campaign finances, money flowing into elections, whether they be candidate elections or issue elections, are fully transparent to the public. I think the public deserves that type of transparency. Right now, it looks like an uphill battle with the way federal court rulings are going. I personally don't have an opinion on limits. I think one can make a good case for them. I also think one can make a good case that there's always ways around limits, and have always been ways around limits in this country of ours where people are pretty ingenious about how they influence elections. But I would hope that council, the mayor, now and well into the future, would do whatever they can possibly do within legal limits to ensure full transparency, and I commend the efforts already made by this council mayor to do just that.
Thank you again, Mr. Ginther and council members. I recognize and have long recognized that even though we're a home-rule charter city, we could not overrule various and sundry court decisions that have affected contribution limits and sources and so forth. Our focus, at least my focus, has been that we can serve the public by insisting, to the extent possible, of full disclosure of the sources of monies. And I think that's what we've tried to do in this particular charter session. So even though we cannot necessarily impose limits on contributions, I think it's important that the voting public know from where these contributions are coming. So that was our focus and my focus.
I guess just a follow-up to that, and maybe I'll pose this question to Mr. Clark. Any other areas around recommendations that we can highlight that'll increase transparency and information flow to the citizens about government through either the elections portion or the other recommendations that are coming forward?
Thank you, Council President Ginther and members of council. First, I would say that with regard to ballot issues, for the first time, we're both saving the city money and making sure that citizens can make an informed decision at the ballot box by requiring that a summary be placed on the ballot and also giving the permissive authority to place arguments for and against an issue in a voting location. That would give citizens the ability to quickly and easily understand what they're being asked to support or oppose, and it would also give the ability, for the first time, to provide truthful and fact-based arguments for and against these issues. With regard to open meetings, as Co-Chair Curtin mentioned, there's long been a gray area with regard to advisory bodies because the definition in the revised code for a public body may or may not include things like the Charter Review Commission or our area commissions. We felt this is one place where we could affirmatively state in the charter that those advisory bodies created by the city for the sole purpose of advising the city on public policy issues can and should be open to the public because sunlight is the best disinfectant. With regard to records of the city, for the first time, our charter will affirmatively state that the records of the city are public records and will also recognize that there were certain records that our framers felt were so important that they should be widely distributed and be retained permanently. These were things like the city budget so that people understood exactly how their taxpayer dollars are going to be spent. I believe that this commission has made very important and modern recommendations in those regards to ensure that vital records of the city, things like the council journal, the city bulletin, the annual reports of the city, the city budget, are items that would be retained in some instances permanently and in all instances electronically so that they are very easily accessible to the citizens of Columbus.
I guess I will look to staff. Do we have any speaker slips for this afternoon's hearing? Is there anyone here in attendance that would like to speak to these recommendations or issues raised before council today? All right. Well, before I conclude the hearing, I do want to discuss next steps moving forward. But before I do that, are there any concluding remarks by either the co-chairs or members of the commission that are here today?
Thank you, President Ginther. Just one, and speaking as a commissioner, not representing the full commission, much substantive work was done here. As I said, I think the commission feels very good about the work that went into this report. It wasn't our charge, it's not our purview, to recommend the sequencing of issues, the packaging of issues, the timing of issues. But as someone who's spent most of his newspaper career following elections, my personal pitch would be to put all of the elections provisions in one issue and to try to keep it separate from others. There are a lot of logical groupings for these various proposals, and council and staff will have to decide how they think that most logically occurs. But I think that the elections-related reforms, all of which I heartily endorse, are so substantive in and of themselves that they should stand alone in one proposed charter issue should council come to that same determination, and I thank you for letting me editorialize on that issue.
Thank you, President Ginther and Councilmember Craig and Paley. I just wanted to say it was a pleasure and honor to serve. A lot of work did go into these recommendations, and I have to, I couldn't agree more with my co-chair in stating how wonderful the mayor's staff and council staff has been in helping move this process along. So I pray the recommendations would be for the benefit of the city of Columbus, and thank you for entrusting this important work to us.
I also enjoyed the privilege and the work, and I also want to thank the staff and our co-chairs for organizing the work in a logical, understandable sequence. There was a lot of stuff that we looked at, and we could have gotten snowed under without the expert leadership that we appreciate. Thank you.
Mr. Ginther, I thank you for asking me to serve on this commission. I very much appreciate the tolerance that the other members of the commission and the staff have had for my many, many questions along the way. But I'd also just like to mention that I think all of us have been motivated by what can we do best to serve this community? We talk about east side, west side, south side, north side, et cetera, but we've always been focused on the community. I think Columbus, Ohio, has been, for the most part, and I know we have our transgressions and our flaws, but for the most part, Columbus, in my view, has been a good community where the people in the community have, for the most part, been listened to by the elected officials, and I think that's the most important part of good government and good community is that there continued to be an open dialogue between the citizens and this government. So again, I thank you for letting me be a part of this, and I thank my fellow commissioners for tolerating me.
Thank you, Mr. Dorian. Just a few comments I'll make about moving forward and where we go from here. Council staff over the next few days will work with the administration and the city attorney's office to incorporate any feedback gleaned today and to begin to format the commission's recommendations into legislation that council expects to have on its agenda for first reading this coming Monday, July 14. We will hold a second public hearing next Wednesday evening, Wednesday, July 16, at 5:30 p.m., here in council chambers. Primary purpose of that hearing will be to receive public comment. Again, public testimony, including written comment, is encouraged. After the hearing next week, and barring any unforeseen challenges, council will consider legislation to advance these recommendations to voters on July 21, Monday, July 21. The process and timeline for placing recommendations on the ballot will be discussed in more detail at next week's hearing and may be informed by additional feedback we receive between now and then. Before I adjourn this hearing, I do want to thank each of the commissioners again for all of your work over the last several weeks and months. Your commitment to this process, the importance of your work, and your careful, thoughtful approach cannot be overstated. So thank you. Also, thanks to city staff who, without, none of this work would have been manageable. Thanks especially to Columbus City Attorney Rick Pfeifer and his chief deputy counsel, Josh Cox. Thanks to Columbus City Clerk Angie Blevins, her entire team, and most especially Cheryl Austin. Thanks to Sherri Kish, deputy chief of staff to the mayor. Your attention to detail and engagement has made this truly a collaborative process, and this is sincerely appreciated. Thanks to our communications team at CTV who have been critical in communicating the work of the commission to Columbus residents. While there's still more work ahead for you, your efforts to get information out to the public in a timely fashion is not only appreciated but critically important. And finally, to council staff, most especially Brian Clark. Your research expertise, attention to detail, thorough preparation, and deferential guidance were vital to the commission's work and deserves recognition. Thank you. With that, if there's nothing else to come before this committee today, we stand adjourned.